All right. You ready?
Hey, if we're all ready to go, this is Roger Friedman, Chairman of the Sycamore Township Zoning Commission. I'll call to order our March meeting of the Sycamore Township Zoning Commission. Mr. Mies, if you are there, if you would take the role.
I'm here and would be happy to. Ms. Flanagan?
Present.
Mr. Swanson?
Present.
Mr. Barrett?
Present.
Mr. Friedman?
Present.
Mr. Roos?
Present.
I'm here as well.
All right.
Full house.
Good. Okay, I guess the first order of business is to approve the minutes of our last meeting. I believe we got those in the form of a transcript of the meeting, which was what, 115 pages long?
Quite a bit, yeah.
The only, there were a couple of spelling things that in particular note to me was that my last name was spelled incorrect on all 115 pages.
So, and maybe some of, maybe some of our, I guess volunteer lawyers here, I know you're not an operator. But, so we've reached out to our court reporter who did transcribe this. Haven't gotten a response back to her yet on whether or not she can make those changes. I'm assuming since it's simple, simple typos and not, you know, substance changes to, you know, what she, to what she recorded, what she witnessed, that she'll be able to. So, if you like tonight, since we don't have a definitive answer on that, we can just table that and wait till next month or our next meeting. If you guys are comfortable with that, we'll either get them changed, or if she's adamant that she can't, then we'll, we can approve them as is with comments.
Okay. I have no problem setting it over till our next meeting. I mean, the transcript is there, it's prepared. I mean, every court reporter I know of has that in a word processing program that, you know, it's fine and replace the word and, you know, it's relative. Do as well as making any other corrections that need to be made. So I would just suggest that if anybody has anything that they would like to correct in the transcript that was provided to us, that we let Skylar know so he can pass that along to the court reporter and make those changes.
Skylar, the form that I got the report in, I don't know that I can highlight or edit that with PDF document. I'll try it again though.
I will, let me see if I can, let me see if I have a different version I can send it to you in and we'll go from there.
I think it was in a PDF format, wasn't it?
Yeah.
And, I mean, you can, under, you know, with Adobe's programs, you can modify that to a Word program and make editorial changes to it. But, and that's a couple of extra steps there.
Yeah, usually I can, but for some reason I had trouble with that one. I'll try it again though.
Yeah, we can, we can convert it through a Word document and send it over.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes the PDFs have a, you know, have a restriction on it that you can't modify it. So, anyway, we can find that out.
Mr. Friedman, just a point of order, I'm here as an alternate today.
Okay.
Seems like everybody's here, so I'll participate, but I won't be voting.
All righty, thank you very much, Will. And I had popped over one item, which we have done the last couple of meetings, that we need a motion to authorize electronic signatures in the event that there is any document that needs to be signed by the zoning commission. So, if we would make that motion?
Okay.
Okay. By Ms. Flanagan, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Hearing nothing, the motion is approved. So, old business, which is case number 2019-20MA. The applicant is Molly Ironmonger. It's my understanding that's continued again?
Yes, sir, and we are, we are reaching out to the hospital. It's time to address that. It's overdue. So, I'm hoping that by our next meeting, we'll have some resolution to that. They're either going to present a case or withdraw.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, we have case number 2021-02MA. The applicant is Kugler Mill Square LLC. Property is located 8495 Voorhees Lane, and it's a major adjustment to a PUD. Mr. Miller, if you would give us an update on that?
Absolutely. Here we go. Let me see if I can get a screen share here. There we go. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, as we said, this is case number 2021-02MA. The applicant is Kugler Mill Square LLC. This is for the, I believe it's newly renamed Oaks of Kenwood. It's a, it's a multifamily development. This is a major adjustment to a PUD. There has been a SPUD on this site that was approved back in 1967. The site has been operating under that, that original PUD since that time with, with no modifications needed to the PUD itself. And I don't know why some of this didn't apologize here. So, it is multifamily development. We are looking at a property that is just over seven acres, 7.0476 acres, with frontage on Voorhees Lane and Beach Avenue. And I'm going to go ahead and flip this to show you guys. The applicant is requesting a major adjustment to this SPUD to approve and expand the existing multifamily development. They're moving from currently 68 units to 118 in this proposal. This is the existing site. As you can see, this is approximately 190 feet of road frontage on Voorhees. And then over here, the actual entrance to the site curves in. It's approximately 25 feet of actual right of way. Actually, maybe a little more of this curve. So, this is currently gated off, and we'll talk about that ingress egress here in a little bit. I do have one question for the applicant that we can get to as far as the total calculation for the site. The major adjustment that we're looking at today is reflected, and the modifications are related to the area in red. However, this area in orange here is also part of the development. Not a major issue, but just, just for the sake of, you know, clearing up any issues, I want to discuss that later. This is the zoning plan. I'm actually going to go back here to this and just show you. It's a little better graphically. What we have to the northwest, south, and to the majority of the east side over here is C, single-family residential. Immediately across the street on Voorhees Lane is the F Light Industrial District. This is actually the old Dormer Building that we recently reviewed a PUD plan for, a PUD 2. Actually, right here for the southern portions where they were doing their expansion. Okay. So, this is, this is really just a color representation of the proposed plan that the applicant submitted. As you can see, there are five existing multifamily. I believe these are two and a half, two and two and a half story units that are being kept. There is a townhouse building here that is going to be raised. And with this proposed expansion, we are getting five additional buildings. So, we have a small building A here, a attached, two buildings here, and another attached over here. Again, this is, this is significantly increasing the density of this property. We are going from the current 9.36 dwelling units per acre up to 16.74. The standard PUD process allows for a maximum of 14.5 dwelling units per acre. However, the SPUD district does allow for additional, or excuse, yes, the SPUD provisions in the zoning resolution allow for an increase in density, and only in the SPUD, as a legislative action of the Board of Trustees. So, any recommendations we make tonight, we need to acknowledge that if this is to move forward. And the trustees will need to make a final determination on the, on the allowed density for this site. Additionally, on this plan, let's see, we are showing all of the, all of the principal structures are going to be set back a minimum of 40 feet from all property lines. There is a, an extensive landscape buffer going around this property. We'll talk about the landscape plan in more detail in a minute. Parking required for this site is 227 parking spaces. The applicant is providing 232 spaces, so we're good there. There are two amenity areas or features in the open space areas. We have a general amenity area in the center. Doesn't really explain what's going in here per se. But we do also have a dog park recreation area as well that's indicated on here. The trash on this site is going to be managed by two, two trash enclosure areas. This is something that we do need to talk about, and I do have a comment on this. Per section 10-5 of our zoning resolution, that would be, it's actually for commercial districts, but we require those trash enclosures to be set back at the same, to have the same setback as the principal buildings. We do allow, for conditional uses, them to be reduced and be, I believe it's 10 feet away from a residential district. With the SPUDs, we are allowed to make modifications to that. And our code has some, I'm going to say some unclear language on this. The actual section is titled as Trash Enclosures for Commercial Uses. Whereas the, the actual table of contents for the zoning resolution shows it as all non-single-family residential districts. So, that's something that we definitely need to clear up in the near future. So, I did add that as a comment. Let's see, moving on to the landscape plan, again, I did say this is pretty extensive for this site. The applicant has actually broken this up into two sections. So, what you're seeing here is the tree planting plan. They have provided us the formula that they use, which is in conformance with our, our buffer yard requirements, as well as showing the internal plantings as well. So, this is the tree plan. And I'll flip this over. This is the additional shrub planting plan, and the trees are still there. There's kind of grayed out. So, again, pretty extensive. We have counted these up, and they do meet the requirements for our buffer yards. Okay? This is an example, this is a black and white example of the elevations for the proposed buildings. Let's see, this is their, this is the two-story, I believe. There we go. And this is the three-story structure that they're proposing. I believe this is for B and C and D and E. This will be an example of that elevation. This is building A. So, in the underlying D district or double D, we do allow for a maximum height of 45 feet or three and a half stories. So, there's no, no issue there with height, height provisions. I am going to go over very briefly. I don't have it in the presentation, but I, I did receive some comments late from, from a couple of outside agencies, as well as our fire department. The big thing to note here is that the Greater Cincinnati Water Works has concerns over the additional water service capacity. They have some pretty extensive comments for the, for the applicant, and the applicant can talk about that here in a minute. Essentially, there's, there's going to be some improvements onsite, as well as the service lines running in, that are going to be the responsibility of the applicant if they move forward. That does tie into fire hydrants and fire service. You know, the, the fire main sizing is, is going to be impacted by that new work, and that will all have to be approved by not only Greater Cincinnati Water Works, but also our fire. One other thing I'm going to talk about, and I jumped around a little bit here. Currently, there is a drive that extends out to Voorhees, but it's gated. They are proposing to maintain a gated access here. This is going to be for emergency access only, and it's certainly something that the, the fire department has indicated that they want to keep. So, with that, should zoning commission recommend approval to, to the Board of Trustees? Staff is going to make the following recommendations for conditions to be incorporated into that. Number one, applicant shall prepare and submit a photometric lighting plan for exterior building and parking lot lights indicating compliance with Sycamore Township zoning resolution in advance of Board of Trustee review. The one thing that was missing from this application that I didn't get was a photometric plan of, of those exterior lights. That includes exterior lights on the buildings, as well as any potential parking lot light structures. The applicant shall, number two, the applicant shall prepare and submit a response to comments from Greater Cincinnati Water Works and Sycamore Township Fire Department in advance of Board of Trustee review. Number three, the applicant proposes a density of 16.74 dwelling units per acre. The increase in density must be approved by the Board of Trustees. Number four, development shall be subject to section 10-5 dumpsters and trash handling areas for non-single-family districts of the Sycamore Township zoning resolution, unless otherwise approved by the trustees. The only other thing I should talk about, I don't know if I said this, the photometric plan. We allow for a maximum of one-half foot candles at the property line. So, a photometric plan indicating that they're in compliance with that would be, would be sufficient to meet the requirements of our resolution. Okay, and available for any questions you may have.
Any member of the commission have any questions for Mr. Miller?
I do not.
I have two quick ones.
Sure.
Skylar, did you, you mentioned the access to Voorhees and the fire department's desire to keep that open. Would that mean that the fence needs to remain open all the time, or is it a crash fence for emergency access?
Oh, okay. I'm actually glad you, you mentioned that.
That's why I'm here.
A gate, keeping me on my toes. So, having it gated and locked is perfectly fine. They will require a Knox box device be, be accessible to them so that they can unlock the device, or unlock the gate. So, either for the benefit of the commission or the public that's watching, a Knox box is a, is a small, secure, essentially a mini safe that would hold the keys or any access device that the fire department would need. They have, they have a universal key for all Knox boxes within their jurisdiction, so that when they go to a site, they can unlock that safe, get the keys out, and, and get in with minimal, minimal additional time, you know, associated with, with getting to the site. So, not a big deal, pretty standard across the region, if not the country. So, that should be an easy condition.
So, we set up that way, isn't it, Skylar?
Honestly, I haven't looked at that gate to.
I've been by it enough times, and I, I thought it was, but.
It's probably a small black or brown box that's, that's, you know, attached to the pole. Honestly, I did not check that, so.
Second question I had, quick had, was is there any signage proposed? I believe there's a small signage off of Beach as you come into the, to the development.
There wasn't a new signing plan attached to this, to this plan. However, we would, you know, the zoning resolution does provide for development signage. Anything that's not, you know, specific to this plan will just be subject to the general conditions, and we can add that as a comment.
Hey, everybody, this is Alex Betch with Bear Becker. How's everyone doing?
Okay.
I don't believe, I don't believe that they'll, they're proposing any new signage for this particular submittal. I think the existing signage will stay in place. I also have Kirk Koppenhofer on the call with me. He's a client representative. So, if I'm speaking incorrectly, Kirk can certainly speak up as well.
Bearwell?
Yep, no, this is Kirk. Yeah, no additional signage is planned.
All right, we'll, we'll get to.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Miller?
Skylar, do you, do the MSD, have they had no comment at all on, on adding all of these additional apartments in there for the flow of the sewage and stuff?
We, we did not receive any comments from, from the MSD.
Okay.
Okay, I see someone with their hand up, but we will get back to them after we move through the applicant comments and then open it up for general discussion. Skylar, I did have one question.
Sure.
Did you pop back? Initial drawing that you had up showing the aerial of the, of the site right now? Yeah, back behind the, what I'll call the, the middle building and kind of the north.
That's a swimming pool.
Okay. And, and I noticed the new plan has a, looks like a detention basin back in that corner.
Yeah, I'll switch over to this. Yeah, so the, the pool obviously would be removed. This is providing for, you know, additional area for the, for the new, new multifamily buildings, as well as the parking lot area. And then, yeah, stormwater has been reviewed by, by Hamilton County, and there's, there's no, no significant comments. All, all standard comments are being submitted.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other questions from the zoning commission to Mr. Miller, if we would flip over, if anyone is here for the applicant, if they would state their name and their affiliation with the applicant, and any additional comments to make?
Yeah, sorry, I prematurely jumped in there a little bit ago. But, like I said, my name's Alex Betch. I'm with Bear Becker. I'm representing the client on this project during the planning and the civil engineering. Kirk Koppenhofer is also on the call, like I said, as a client's rep. And I would like for Kirk just to give just a brief introduction of who the, who the owners are and their involvement in the community and that sort of thing. So, I'll turn it over to Kirk for just a few minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Alex, and thanks, guys. Hopefully you can hear me all right. I, I just want to let you all know that these expansion plans, you know, we just purchased the property last year, about a year ago. And, you know, this expansion project isn't, isn't necessarily, you know, something we're considering in order to upgrade the project in order to flip it or anything like that. My wife's family has very deep connections in the area. You know, they grew up there. Her parents lived there for years. In fact, the Deer Park High School football stadium is named after my father-in-law. So, they've got very deep ties to that area, and they've actually owned another apartment property. It's not even a mile away from the one we're discussing tonight. So, really, what we're aiming to do is just upgrade a property that has, we feel has significant potential. And also, really just increase the supply of competitively priced rental units so that younger people who want to stay in the area can, they've got a place to, you know, to check out and perhaps, perhaps live. Since we purchased the property last year, we've made a lot of upgrades already. We've also been able to rehab some units that frankly were in desperate need of it. The, the previous owner had totally kept up with things as much as they probably should have. So, we've been, we've been working hard to get everything, you know, up to where it should be. And these plans, you know, we feel they wouldn't only just upgrade the property further and enhance amenities. We think it'll, again, increase the housing supply for younger folks from the area that want to stay in the area. And, and we think we might be able to do this without causing too much of a disruption to the surrounding area as well.
Okay. Any further comments about the, Alex, I think you're on mute.
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to thank Skylar and everyone else on the call. Skylar, your presentation was great. You, you covered everything that I would have covered at another time, so appreciate it. And thank you all for your time, and we're here to answer any questions if you got them, of course.
One question would be, in reading the comments to, the staff comments to the staff report that were, were just updated today, does the applicant have any issue with any of those items that are set forth?
No, I think the section 10-5 in relation to the dumpster enclosures, so we're certainly, you know, open to working with you guys to figure out a better location for that pad that's too close to the boundary on the western edge. The photometric plan is no problem. We can, we can work to get that completed as well. I can meet with Kirk after this call, and we can, we can arrange that, have that done. As far as, the big one, I think, was GCWW. We did, we were proactive and had a call with them earlier this, or last week, towards the end of last week. And they expressed the concerns that they had shared, and we talked about all of the different options that we'll have. And there are options. It's just a matter of as we work, as we work into the detailed plans, we'll have to have those conversations with the client to figure out which one makes the best sense. There is, so on Voorhees Lane, there's a six-inch waterline there, and then down on Kugler Mill, there's an eight-inch. So, it's, it's, and you use either one or the other, or there's a combination of the two, depending on, you know, which strategy we want to go with. But, but just at this point in time, until we get further into the detailed plans, we'll be able to figure out that solution once we get there.
Okay.
Was that all of them, or was there another comment, Skylar?
The question, I was hoping you could just, just resolve for me, again, not a huge issue. But there's a kind of a remnant parcel that's on the, that's on the west side of the, or excuse me, east side of the development.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the future plan for that, and was that, was that taken into account for the, for the total?
Yeah, so the, so the reason for that, it was originally when we were, when we had our pre-application meetings, we didn't know that this was an existing SPUD. We thought we were going in for a brand-new PUD. So, we thought the, the best way to do this was because on your current zoning map, that is, the underlying district is single-family, as opposed to the DD. So, we thought the easiest route in terms of the rezoning would be to exclude that particular portion. But now that, now that, if that's included as part of the SPUD, it would probably make sense just to include it with the, the existing, with the rest of the property. I would certainly defer to you to whatever was the best route.
You know, I, I think it could go either way. You know, it's, it certainly causes issues with your boundary to keep it as, you know, as part of the plan. You know, I just, again, for density purposes and everything else, if it's counting towards the total site. um, we need to know. If it's not, then, then that's fine. It's, it's a rented property that, um, maybe can be sold off or, or something else can be done with it. So it's, I, I think at this point in time, it, uh, you know, o- owner's discretion.
Okay, yeah, we'll have that discussion and get back with you on that item.
That's fine.
Anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Barrett.
Uh, yes, uh, there's a question, I guess, on the density. Um, as Skylar mentioned during his presentation, the normal, uh, double D district, I guess, would allow up to fourteen and a half units. And, uh, which is a, a rather dense, um, number. And basically max that we typically would see in the township. And you're proposing to go above that and I'm kind of curious why. And if so, what are you doing, I guess, to offset the additional density as far as, uh, any other setbacks, additional landscaping or something that makes, uh, higher density more acceptable for the neighborhood?
Yeah, that's a, it's a great question. Um, so I think, as we were looking at the site, we were just looking at a, it, it was just laid out very inefficiently. So we wanted to, to make sure that it was being utilized fully. And, um, one of the other items, we wanted to make sure we kept low. If you look at the plan, there still is a lot of green space. The, the impervious surface ratio is around forty-four, forty-five percent. So we wanted to keep that number down, um, to make sure that the impact isn't felt, you know, too much. Um, and I think when I look at the site plan, I don't think it feels overbearing or overwhelming. We wanted to make sure that it still kept its, um, you know, natural, the natural aspects of the site. We wanted to provide, you know, we wanted to make sure that we maintained that forty-foot perimeter setback. Um, not have any structures within that, um, and then provide, uh, a nice, uh, landscape plan that would, would, um, enhance the current, um, landscape elements that are on the site. One thing that we do want to do as we progress further into the, um, the process here is, is take a closer look at the existing vegetation and figure out how we can incorporate that as much as possible. You know, if there's any mature, nice trees, we want to keep those as much as possible. We want to disturb the least amount of trees as possible on the site. And then supplement that with additional landscaping, uh, elements. Uh, there are in the middle of the site, uh, to the two large trees that are shown, sort of southeast of existing building two, those are two really large, nice, uh, mature oak trees. So we did want to show that we're preserving those and maintaining those on the site. Um, but I also think there are a lot of trees along the perimeters, uh, of the property that we also want to make sure that we're maintaining for sure. And we don't want to disturb any trees that are unnecessary.
Any other questions from the zoning commission? Mr. Ruth?
No, I have none.
Okay, anyone?
I'd like to follow up with, uh, Mr. Barrett's question. I, I don't really know that we got an answer for why it ended up at the density that it's at though. I know you said you're trying to keep the number down, but couldn't it have been kept down lower to be in compliance, at least with our maximum rather than over that?
Kirk, were you gonna jump in? I could, it looked like maybe you were gonna say something. Well, those are just. Okay.
Uh, yeah, we're just, again, the way it's laid out right, right now, it, as Alex said, it's a very inefficient layout. And we were just trying to, to use the space more efficiently. Um, that's really, actually with the, the initial proposal, there were actually, uh, there was another building, um, that was initially proposed. But we decided that that wouldn't be a good idea, that cluttered up too much and pushed the density, I mean, they would push it way above the, the limit. So we're just trying to, again, use it, the space more efficiently and, uh, you know, create, uh, you know, more good places to live for folks in the area.
Yeah, not, not to be argumentative, but I mean, taking out twenty units, drop you down, I think just below fourteen units per acre. Okay, um, there are no other questions. We're gonna open up the comments or questions from anyone else, uh, who is participating in the meeting tonight. So I know Ms. Dominguez has had her hand up for some time, so we'll start with you if we could.
Hey there, this is, uh, Mr. Dominguez.
Oh, okay, well, there's a picture of a lovely woman on this.
Sorry about that. We live at four, three, one, five Williams Avenue, which is directly behind the proposed, uh, I believe, D and E building, which is currently the, uh, two-family condo. So, one, Mike, I have several questions, but one question is, is your, uh, um, lighting schedule, what's that gonna look like? Because all of our back bedrooms back up to that property. So, you know, we have young children and stuff and I just know if a parking lot is going directly behind our fence, then we're gonna be lit up. Um, so I'm, I'm just curious as to, you know, one, how many, how many, how much lights are going in? Uh, two main, and another one is the runoff water behind that. Parking area, because currently that property is already sitting higher than our property. And whenever it rains, uh, my yard, especially my neighbor's yard, which is the corner of Voorhees and Williams, our yards are already turned into, um, almost a swampland. So I definitely think that the runoff needs to be addressed. And I'm, I'm just really concerned about the lighting right there, being in a parking lot.
There you go. That's the one, Skylar.
There we go. I'm sorry, sir, I didn't mean to cut you off. I was just trying to, to bring up, uh, pertinent, pertinent parts of the plan to address your issues.
Oh, yeah, no worries. And, you know, like you guys said, you're already over twenty units, uh, of the original allotted, you know, whatever's allowed. So, yeah, I'm just, I'm really worried about the runoff water, because it's already, uh, uh, an issue.
So, um, thanks for the question. Um, in terms of the runoff, I think, you know, the site will drain to the, to the, to the west, the northwestern corner of the, of the site, and then there'll be an outlet there. Um, I think with, with the improvements to the site, the drainage will, will also improve with that. So you, you may actually see an improvement in terms of the runoff onto your property, because everything should drain, um, to the west there and to the proposed basin. And then there's an outlet, uh, an existing outlet there that would, uh, release the water to the west. Uh, in terms of the lighting, we'll definitely prepare a photometric plan. And I don't know if Kirk maybe could talk about, um, what's currently in place and, and maybe what his plans are in terms of schedule for the lighting.
Well, I know, I mean, our, our main thing is, is to be as least disruptive as possible. And I know that, um, the landscaping plan would, would make sure that back, that north property line is, is pretty heavily wooded, um, in order to, you know, protect all, all the folks that live behind the property there. Uh, not protecting, but, you know, make sure that, that they have that, that sense of privacy as well. So we, we'd be certain to, to do is be as least disruptive as possible, uh, with the lighting. And, and we can certainly work with the township and the community to, uh, to try to figure out, uh, the best way to, to attack that.
I appreciate that, which brings me to my next point. Uh, looking at your, um, plan for the, uh, trees. I have currently an eight-foot privacy fence on my property. And I know that over time, when trees or, or bushes start to grow, they will initially, or they will start to push on my fence. So what is the plan for that?
If you don't mind, I can jump in. Um, my name is Ken. I'm the, uh, current property manager of the existing location and, and the five buildings that are currently, currently there. So I know, uh, and this might help, your current fence, you know, is, you know, already built around, you know, a few trees. Um, so those trees, I believe, would be pulled far and far away enough from your current trees. So it shouldn't have any discrepancy or issues with, you know, your current landscaping and your current fence. So it should all be pulled away, you know, back enough.
Fair enough. Thank you for your time.
Okay, uh, any other, uh, comments or questions?
Um, if I can jump in for a second, just clarification on the, the density. Uh, so our, our zoning resolution has, has different tiers, different, different levels of, of intensity. Uh, if we're, if we're talking about commercial uses, we're talking about ISR, uh, which, which, you know, sets the standard or triggers different levels of review. Um, with, with multifamily, it's dwelling units per acre. So we have, you know, we have our low-density multifamily, I believe that's seven point two-six. Um, you know, then we have a moderate, then our, then our maximum for our, our standard. Um, high, uh, high-density residential multifamily, what is that, fourteen point five? Um, those are, those are managed through, uh, our, our PUD process. So once you hit the, the moderate density level, then you have to have PUD one review, which is review and approval by the zoning commission. Once you hit the high density, now you're required to get recommendation from zoning commission and final approval by board trustees. Those are both administrative PUDs. Um, and they, they're, they're basically, um, we have to adhere to the, uh, the legislative document, the zoning resolution. Uh, in SPUD, it's a whole different animal. This is a, this is now a legislative, uh, approval by board of trustees that we're, um, uh, that we're making recommendations to. The SPUD does allow for an even higher density. And just like Mr. Barrett said, uh, you know, what's the give and take? So, um, it's not to say that, that fourteen and a half, uh, dwelling units per acre is our absolute maximum. We're never gonna pass that. Uh, CIG is a perfect example of that. Uh, the question is, is why, why should we deviate from our standard legislative document? So, you know, what are we getting in return here? That's really for the applicant to make, uh, to, to make that argument for and, and get approval by board trustees. You know, is that, you know, um, you know, is that the high percentage, um, of, uh, of pervious surface on this document versus, or on this plan versus, um, you know, other types of development? Is it, I don't know, whatever, you know, whatever, uh, other amenities or features of the site that they want to argue, uh, validates that increased density. Uh, that is for the applicant, uh, to, to make that argument. But I, I don't want us to think in terms of fourteen and a half is the only thing we're ever going to allow. Um, the, the provisions, specifically the SPUD, which is what we're in, does allow for this. So, um, we should certainly get something for it. I mean, that's, that's, but that's the reason why we have this type of plan in place.
Okay, um, I know, uh, I think, uh, it's Judy, uh, Geese or Geis had your hand up, but you need to take your mute off so we can hear you. Okay.
Um, I'm Kitty Geezy and I live at eighty-four, eighty-one Voorhees Lane. I'm the one who's wa- the water all comes down and floods my yard every time there's a water issue. And, uh, also, I, I have a little bit of noise concern. If they're putting a parking lot right behind our house, uh, my bedroom is right on that side of the house. So, I mean, unless all these people's gonna come in by eleven and go to bed, but I, I just don't think that that's how it works. Uh, you're gonna have people coming in all time at night and that's the reason I'm thinking maybe they need to put a fence up there, uh, as a noise barrier. Um, that's one of my issues. My bigger issue is the sewer issue. Um, the, um, we've had sewer issues two or three times where our backyard smelled like a sewer. It smelled like poo. Now, if they're gonna add a hundred and eighteen more units, you're gonna say, okay, two people per unit. You're ass, you're adding a lot more toilet stuff, sewage. And I just want to make sure that they are gonna make sure that the sewage can cover the amount of people they're wanting to put in that space. Can anybody answer that?
Yeah, thank you for your question, Judy. Um, I can, uh, just assure you that the, the sewers will be, the sanitary sewers will be designed per the guidelines and they have to go through a review process. And, and we'll, we'll make sure as part of that process and, and the approval process that everything is sized properly and, and there won't be any issues there.
Yeah, their sewer pipe is like about five feet from our yard. I mean, it's that close and when it's not working right, all the smell comes right in our yard. We can't even go out there. It's so bad. And, and one day I was wanting to have a cookout and we just couldn't stay out there. So I called the sewer people and they came and they worked on it for days and finally got, and I don't know if they put a Band-Aid on it or what they did. But, yeah, yeah, and, and, but I'm just hoping that if they're gonna add more, they're gonna make sure that they've got the sewage, um, worked out so that it's not gonna have that issue. And I realized that was a different owner over there then. And they, I guess they was trying to cut cost and, and doing, um, whatever, but I just, I just really did not like that smell. I mean, it was really like being in a sewer, to be honest with you. So, I mean, if you could have them address that issue, because I don't think their sewer is actually strong enough to cover what they've got now. And if they add more, you know, I, I'm sure they're gonna add more to their sewer before they stick all these people over there in these bathrooms. So, that, that's one of my issues. The water runoff is one of my issues. Um, and, and something else, over at the apartments, they've been putting old appliances out. And, and it really is a sore, they're not gonna keep doing that once they do this, I hope. Correct?
No, ma'am, the, uh, yeah, the, the appliances that are out by the, uh, one large dumpster and Ken, you can talk about this.
Right behind my house, right, it's right behind my house, yeah.
Yeah, those are, um, units that are being remodeled and those are the old appliances. And then they get, Ken, how often do, do those get, does that dumpster get picked up?
Yeah, so, uh, all those appliances that were being there are, you know, old from, you know, the sixty, seventies, you know, what have you. But those have all been picked up recently. Um, that dumpster is currently picked up. That, that dumpster is currently picked up every week, week and a half, depending on how full we, we use it in the renovations. Um, but as of right now, that, you know, there are no appliances currently. Um, we have to pay for people to pick up those appliances. So, uh, they'll sit there for maybe two or three days before we can get someone out there. Um, but once all this renovation and, you know, new progress, you know, will hopefully begin, that will definitely be removed. And that's the whole process that, you, you know, you won't see in the future.
That's good, that's good. I, I do have another question. You know, our address is eighty-four, eighty-one Voorhees and the, uh, addresses go up as they go down. And yet, um, the address, yeah, as they go north. And the address over there that they have is eighty-four, ninety-five, which is higher than our address. And then I don't understand how they have a higher address than we do.
That current address is actually, uh, it's for beach, so it's eighty-four, ninety-five beach. So we'll, we're the access location off of Voorhees, um, is not the actual apartment address.
Okay, okay, that makes perfect sense then.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, you know what, that my only other concern, like I said, is the noise issue. Um, since that parking lot's gonna be fairly close to our house and that's where the bedroom is. Um, I, I don't know if there's a, a fence or something they could put up as a noise barrier or not. But, I mean, you're going all the way down the road there and, and having all these lights. I mean, you're going all the way down the road there and and having all these lights and parking lots where people who go to bed at night. And and I realize that people have different going to bed times. We're older, we go to bed earlier. I know some people go to bed later and that's the, that's their lifestyle, but um, I'm just hoping that it doesn't get real noisy. That that's my other concern is the noise level. So I don't know if there's some way you could address that, but.
The two main things is water runoff.
And the sewer. But that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else with any comments or questions?
This is Mr. Dominguez. I have one more.
Okay.
Um, pertaining to the, my mom, which is older, lives on Applewood or wherever that street is over there, next to your basin. Uh, just one more thing. I just wanted to make sure the water off is going to be okay there. Um.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. Um, and I think, um, most water issues should be improved with the improvements that'll happen to the site. So the basin should make, uh, water runoff, um, better for the residents that are adjacent to there. Um, there are certain guidelines that those, um, basins have to follow and there's a a separate review review process for that design. And, um, I think the improvements, uh, you'll actually see an improvement in the runoff over there.
Yeah, if I can also kind of just touch and add on that, um.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I didn't, I don't know. You go ahead, Mr. Dominguez.
My last concern was is that I heard in your guys' proposal that there is a proposal for two dumpsters. I know currently on the Kugler Mills site, there are at least three or four and we still have a trash issue backing up to our, uh, fence. So if you're going down to two and doubling the size of your occupancy, um, I I just think there needs to be way more dumpsters or or some sort of active, uh, trash pickup with your maintenance crew or whatever it may be.
Um, yes, Alex might be also able to, you know, touch base on this, but currently those, there are currently four dumpsters on site. Um, and those are small dumpsters compared to, I believe, what will be added. So with those current dumpsters, they're, um, easily accessible for all residents. So I know current residents will just leave them propped open. So things blow out and things like that, but with the current proposal, they will be added as more. It'd be less accessible for trash to be able to be blown about. And, um, in in that regards, it would be, you know, I think you'd see it actually a decrease in in the amount of trash around the property itself. So there would be a a larger dumpsters in place to to correspond with, you know, the, with lessening the dumpsters on site.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, Kenneth. The the goal is to to minimize the amount of locations of dumpsters, but to increase the the amount of dumpster space and to make it more accessible to the community. Um, but as as per one of the township's comments, we will be looking at, um, potentially relocating or or shifting the dumpster that's to the west over there to make, to get it further away from that property line.
Yeah, fair enough. I just know that in parking spaces, people typically tend to just dump the contents of their car into the parking spaces. So, okay.
I have that, I have that issue around where I live too.
All right. Thank you for your time, guys.
All right.
I just have, I just have one more question. And and I just want to know that, um, I have a question about the water pressure. When they add all that more of those units over there, is it going to change our water pressure here?
Um, I don't believe that it should. There'll be improvements, uh, necessary improvements, um, for this type of increase in density and we'll work with GCWW, um, but in order for these, the additional units to be served, there will be necessary improvements to the existing, uh, water, uh, pipes.
Great, great.
Yes, ma'am, that that was one of the conditions of the, uh, set out in the, uh, staff report that we we get a full explanation from Cincinnati Water Works about what's going to happen, uh, if this development goes forward. Okay, there are no other, uh, comments or questions. Anyone on the zoning commission have any other further comments or does anyone wish to make a motion considering this application?
I'm sure I have a question and it's more about the economics of the development. Will the nature and character in monthly rents of the units that are being added be consistent with what is there today?
Yeah, this is a Kirk, um, yeah, they won't. So the the, uh, the current units are just in terms of aesthetics are all siding and brick kind of facade. We're going to stick with that. So it's consistent with what's currently there. In terms of the rental prices, um, they would be consistent. They might be slightly higher than than the existing units. Uh, but that's just because, you know, newer buildings, et cetera. Uh, it would be, it wouldn't be, uh, you know, super high end rent prices, be more kind of, uh, mid-tier sort of price levels, uh, from what I understand. So in that sense, it it'll be comparable to what's currently there. Um, you know, slight increase to the new buildings, but but not not a huge increase, no.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Roger, I did have one minor issue just before we go into deliberation, just from a technical point of view, the, uh, actual street address, we probably should clear that up because I kind of had the same question. Is it really Voorhees or Blue Ash Road or now I'm hearing, uh, uh, the street that goes up between the developments? So just, uh.
Beach.
So is it technically beach then is the correct address?
Beach.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, the the staff, we got it indicated Blue Ash Road.
Well, I and I apologize for that.
It looks like, it looks like beach is probably a more accurate address.
So I think that the address for the, like where the mail goes to is beach, but on the property report, it's Voorhees. So there's a, like a discrepancy there. So we we aired on the side of Voorhees, but maybe we should have aired the other way.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the the main proposal for the building, so all, yes, Alex is right in saying all mail goes to, you know, Beach Avenue um, for all those properties, but Voorhees is is this is the address we get for like GCWW bills for. So everything for the city is through Voorhees, but mail and and everything from there on out is beach.
The the number on Voorhees is probably different than the the beach number then, right?
Correct.
Yeah, this was actually a, uh, a discussion Alex and I had. Uh, actually Kirk was part of that too. Uh, at time of, uh, the application, it was, okay, what what do we want to go with? And um, you know, at the time, for consistency sake, it was, uh, the 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 plans had already been submitted. Uh, so the application was changed to reflect what was on the, uh, um, the actual submitted plans, but you know, that's as far as, as far as mailing addresses, everything else, the, um, you know, there's multiple parcels on this site. So, um, you know, uh, from a development review standpoint, um, you know, as long as there's some consistency in in referencing this, we're fine. Um, their their mailing address is, you know, potentially going to change.
I have a one, I have a question, um.
Ma'am, we're beyond that now. Um, so, anyone on the zoning commission have any other comments or anyone wish to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we consider case twenty twenty-one dash O two MA, which would include the staff comments that were added tonight.
I'll second that.
Second, okay. Any further comments or discussion?
There's planning.
Sorry, I have to get myself unmuted. Um, I do have some concerns about the density. I realize it can be done, but I'm just not certain we need to go past the max, you know, so quickly or I I'm just not sure that I heard enough about what we're getting in return. That being said, I understand that's a board of trustee decision. And on the whole, the project looks, uh, very nice and does preserve some landscaping and greens, uh, green places, it's spaces. Um, and the, as long as the other conditions are are met and taken into account, I don't have a problem with it. But I do, I do, I would rather see us keep the density down so we, um, we just don't fill to the max every piece of land.
Certainly. Mr. Mace?
Well, yeah, I think that that would be the biggest concern, but, um, as a developer, I would also understand that, you know, you would like to maximize your development. If it's done well, um, provides the best economic return and and is the most efficient use of land. Um, I heard the comment, like, if we're going to go to that density, we should be getting something. So that's just kind of rolling through my mind what those things might be that we would get. Um, it seems like, you know, parking is is adequate. The, um, it seemed the the landscaping is adequate. Um, and as I just kind of do a squint test on the plan, it looks like there's plenty of green space. So I'm not sure if there was some horse trading to be done of density for something else that we might get out of it. I'm not really sure what that something might be. Um, you know, the amenities here, the dog park, the amenity area, it's definitely kind of an isolated development so that these amenities are meant to serve the residents within within the development. Um, and just the way it's tucked in to this neighborhood. Um, I'm not sure what other things we might be asking the applicant to provide uh, by way of trading for a a greater density. Um, so as I look at it, I understand the argument. We don't want to just max out every place, but as I look at this plan, it doesn't feel to me like it's too dense.
Thank you. Mr. Ruse, anything else?
Um, other than the, uh, the the sewage situation, that would be my major concern. You know, because you're doubling the size, but, uh, you know, hopefully MSD will tackle that problem. Um, otherwise I'm, I have no problem with the plan. I mean, I've I've grown up around this area and I've known that area and any kind of improvement that they can make in that apartment situation would be great because I know it's gone run, it's been run down for a number of years. So, but that's being said, I'm all for the, for this particular plan.
Mr. Barrick?
Uh, yeah, I'll go back, I guess, to the density issue. That's as I brought up in my earlier question and Skylar, I understand you, you gave a good explanation on how it, the different, um, gradations, I guess, of density throughout the township, how we would look at that. And, uh, with the increase going above the fourteen and a half, I would think that'd be very valid, more in the core, um, Kenwood, uh, Montgomery Road. Higher density, like where we've got going next to the hospital and things like that. When we're out in the middle of a purely residential, single family neighborhood with with just an isolated double letter district multifamily in there, that seems to be the area where we would not be wanting to put it above the fourteen and a half. Um, and I can see, you know, allowing additional, uh, units on the site. Um, there there is quite a bit of green space there. Uh, what bothers me, I guess, um, the units we're going in with, uh, the three larger buildings are all, but if they're, there's they're called different buildings, I guess, but they're a a double out on the northwest corner, a double over the northeast corner are both, uh, three story buildings. So we're putting taller buildings closer to the residents than than what's there right now. So if you were planning that from scratch, trying to drop that into a, into a single family neighborhood, you would typically put your taller units in the middle and smaller units at the side. Then you would have some justification for, you know, the the conflict between a single family and a multifamily. So, um, I'm not real pleased, I guess, with the the layout and the positioning of the larger buildings, um. And that also leads to the fact of putting the parking on the north boundary right up tight to the backyards of some existing single properties over there. So I'm seeing a lot of detrimental impacts coming out of this and that's why I was asking, what do we get? And I don't see that there was anything additional to isolate from the, uh, the parking lot. Uh, additional height that these taller buildings going in doesn't make sense to me. Um, the one building, it's building B, I think the corner of it is right at the forty foot line. Backs up to one of the smaller, single family sites to the west, which is, it looks to me like a very tight conflict.
Um. To the south, you mean?
Uh, building B, I guess, or quarter B over in the northwest corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one goes up to very close to a home that's over there on a very small lot. And then, um, as was mentioned earlier, I guess, the noise issues, uh, particularly over from buildings D and E, that parking is right in the backyard of, uh, uh, existing single family homes. So there's a lot of, I see a lot of problem areas going on here, I guess. Um, and that's why I was asking, what are we getting out of it? I don't see that we're getting any additional, um, compensation as far as planning goes. Are we increasing landscape anywhere? Are we adding, you know, additional setbacks anywhere? Are we tapering down? There's nothing that that helps this out. I see nothing but problems coming out of it. So I don't object to additional units. I'd just like to be smart about how they're planned and where they go and frankly, I'm not sure that we could, I could see where we could justify going above fourteen and a half, uh, but that could be proven wrong. Maybe it's by putting in a three story unit in the middle where the amenity area is or something like that. Um, might justify it, but I would prefer to see no more than two story units around the perimeter where they're coming up closer to distinct homes, you know. Uh, overall, I'm not, I'm not in favor of the plan as it's presented right now. I'm not, I'm not against increasing the number of units on the property, but I don't think this is the best way to go about it.
I I I think the only thing right now is, um, would would basically be the the high percentage of green space. I think that's, you know, you got to ask yourself if that is, if that's sufficient justification for the for the increase in density or not. Yeah.
Yeah, I, uh, from my standpoint, I I I certainly think it's the, you know, the the concept of the plan is a is a good improvement to the property. I I do agree with Mr. Barrick though. I I think, uh, you know, we're approaching seventeen units per acre. Um, you know, what's that about a, uh, eighty percent increase and what's there currently? I I think if, you know, those three story buildings, if we knock them down to, uh, two stories, um, you know, you you would still get probably fifteen and a half units per acre. Um, or fifteen units per acre, I, you know. Um, if 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 in fact, uh, you know, we, uh, adopt the motion to recommend this to the trustee. I understand they have the final say, but I'd like to tag on a, uh, just our comments if we could that, uh, you know, in in deciding the the number of units per acre, that they take a close, hard look at that and and, um, perhaps come in with a lower density than what is currently proposed here. So.
So, so it seven, so fourteen point five is the dwelling units per acre? So that's a hundred and one units versus a hundred and eighteen that are proposed?
Right.
For seventeen off, and it looks like buildings B, C, D and E each have eight units per floor?
It'd be six, you know, if you took one floor off each one of those buildings, that, you know, you're taking out sixteen units, I think.
I think thirty-two, right? I think there's. Alex, can you clarify a building?
Yeah, it would be, uh, so B, C, D and E have four units per floor. So it'd be sixteen total that you'd be removing.
So if you took the top floor off of those four buildings, you'd be within the fourteen and a half?
Just a a comment in response to, I think it was Richard, um, in terms of the layout, I, the one thing I do want to point out is that the existing conditions on the site were challenging, to say the least. There are utilities and easements and overhead power lines everywhere on the site. So the the amount of spaces where you can, um, put everywhere on the site. So the, the amount of spaces where you can, um, put a building were limited. Um, so we wanted, given those circumstances, wanted to provide the, the best possible, most aesthetically pleasing plan that we could. Um, given those circumstances. And, you know, like I said, we just wanted to increase the density and the yield from an economic perspective, you know, as Bill was touching on, uh, for the owners', um, benefits, but we also wanted to, to maintain the green space. Maintain and improve upon the landscaping and, uh, and keep the impervious surface ratio down as far as we possibly could in the process.
Okay. Uh, no, if there's no further comments, uh.
Roger, I, I do have a comment. Um, when I think about what do we get in return? Um, these additional units sound like they're going to, um, create a need for some infrastructure capacity increases. So when I hear about water running off onto a property, but now we're going to have that water diverted away from that property. Uh, when I hear about sewage may have to be increased for the capacity to handle this. Um, the same with the water service being increased in capacity. To me, that's something that we can get out of this. Um, that'll benefit not just this particular development, but the, but the area. The second comment I have is, um, the fence. So having a fence or a barrier along that, along that property line, uh, between the neighbor's property makes sense to me. Um, it is close to the property and if I, I live close to a development myself. Um, and I know I would be frustrated if, one thing, you are going to have people coming and going at all different times. Um, so if there were a fence there to block the lighting from spilling over onto the property when people are pulling in and out, or if there were a condition that says along this, i- in addition to the fence, along this parking lot that we, there's no backing in to these parking spots because that would again be aiming lights directly at the neighbors. I think that's something worth considering. Um, aside from that, I, I really have no concerns. To me, it looks like um, part of the outcome here could be that the developer with a bunch of new buildings and new units is going to have to upgrade their existing units in order to, you know, maintain a, um, the right character. So I, I think that's a benefit as well.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, uh, just a, just a quick comment on that as well. Um, I think, um, Kirk and the owners would certainly be willing to work with the community in terms of those privacy concerns with the adjacent property owners. Um, Kirk?
Yes, again, we're, we're, yeah, we're, we're committed to the, the area and, and it, it's, it's a big part of, you know, where the, the family's from and, and, you know, what they care about. So yes, we would definitely work with the existing neighbors to, to make, to limit any kind of disruptions, uh, to their, their lives.
Okay, before us, we have the motion to consider this application that's been seconded. Um, anyone else, uh, want to suggest any amendments to that motion or to take a vote on the motion now? Hearing nothing, Mr. Mace? Go ahead.
I was, I was just gonna say, I mean, we've had, feels like we have some, some in the camp on, on commission that would like a lower density. Do we want to recommend a different density to the trustees? I, I, I do think the project overall is a good improvement to the area. I'd hate to see it stopped.
I, I, I agree that I, I think it's a great improvement to the property and to the area. I'd, but I do agree with Mr. Barrett, as I said before, that I, I think that the, the density for the, uh, for the area should be a little bit lower than the, the sixteen point seven four that's before us right now.
I, I agree with your comments and, and perhaps we could add a different condition or on it. But I also have some concerns. I think Mr. Barrett's correct, you know, with the, they were two stories. Uh, it might be a better layout. I know they talked about high-density wires, et cetera. But if you don't have a three-story building, maybe you don't have those problems. So, um, I have some concerns about just sending uh, an approval as is on the plan with just the reduction in the density. I think he's brought up some other valid points as well.
Right, I guess that's where I was headed. Are we better as a commission saying we could support the application if it had a lower density and give the applicant the opportunity to pitch their case to the trustees if they can convince them that it should be denser, more dense? Or do we go with what sounds like we might be disapproving this application?
Yeah, and I don't know where the vote coming out. I, I, you know, I like the idea. I like the plan. I, I would rather have a go before the trustees, knowing that there are several people on the commission who feel that the density should be a little bit lower, at least that, that's what I heard. But I think overall, there is a, uh, um, a willingness to push forward the, the concept plan because I think it is a good concept plan. I, I think it's a good, good improvement to the property. Um, but you can get the same improvements to the property without, you know, going to that extra, uh, you know, so many feet. So. Anyway, with, with that said, if anyone cares to make a, an amendment to the motion, we'll hear that. If not, we'll take a vote on the motion before us.
And I'm, I'm, I'm typing furiously right now to try and keep up with, uh, the conversation that's been going. So before we, um, do a final, a, a final vote, I'll, I'll throw up what I have here on the, uh, on the share screen.
Skylar, are you adding the, the, the amendment to your, your, uh, proposal?
I don't think there's been an amendment yet, Steve.
Okay.
There, there hasn't. There's been some discussion about the commission recommending the density uh, remain at or below fourteen point five dwelling units per acre.
Okay.
That's.
But I'm sorry, just to clarify, that's been a discussion point, but nobody has amended some motion to modify your recommended conditions of approval.
Right.
And that's where I'm stuck is, do we want to explore an amendment to that motion? And let the trustees consider, or do we? What, what happens if this is turned down at this point and it doesn't have our recommendation? Does it still go to the trustees and they can vote on the density that they consider appropriate?
You know, I, I can, I can put my notes up here. I, I don't want to, um, I guess I don't want to steer the.
Let me, let me, let me rephrase my question. You mentioned previously that it's a legislative act of the trustees to modify the density. If it comes to the trustees with a negative recommendation from the zoning commission, does that ma- make, make it a deal killer for the trustees to move forward on the legislative act, or that, can they do what they want to do?
Uh, they still have full authority to do what they want to do. Uh, the, the final authority, also the trustees with both, uh, the administrative PD two uh, or the legislative SPUD. Um, you know, it, it certainly impacts the, the light that it's, it's presented into them. Um, now, either way, um, you know, the, the, the conditions or the, you know, the, uh, the, the discussion points that, that, uh, that the commission, uh, has is submitted in their, in the recommendation document.
Well, I, I'll go out on a limb and say, I like the project. I think it's a good improvement to the area. I'd like the trustees to make the decision on the density if they feel appropriate. So I would propose to Steve that we amend his motion so that item three of the, uh, of the recommended conditions is that it be fourteen and a half dwelling units per acre so that we would have the chance to send the project to the trustees with a recommendation. Cause I do think it's a positive impact to the area if the density is right.
Item three isn't, isn't, is about the waterworks, it looks like. On the staff recommendations, is that what you're referring to, Bill?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the report I have in front of me and also the one that Skylar put up on the screen.
Oh, there he is. Okay. All right. Yeah, I, I, that's fine with me.
Mr. Mace, is that, uh, is the language, um, here consistent with, with your, with your intent?
I, I guess it, it would need to be changed that, yeah, the commission recommends a density remain at, at fourteen and a half.
Uh, if I could, uh, I guess regarding that, um, your comment about remain, it's not really at fourteen and a half right now. So it should be reduced to no more than fourteen and a half, just to, to clarify the wording there. But, um, I'm a little still a little wary about doing this in this manner because we could still end up with, uh, two or three three-story buildings back in the one corner and they could just eliminate one of the three-story buildings or something that, however the math works out. So, um, I, I think there's enough issues here that, uh, I'm a little hesitant to give it any kind of a an approval, even with this kind of language in there. Uh, I'd also like to see what the changes are proposing that would alleviate some of the, uh, noise and or light, uh, problems along the, uh, rear, um, lot lines of those, uh, single-family homes.
So you want me to, am I adding right now or are we still considering?
Well. In terms, in terms of the lighting, um, if, if their photometric plan they submit is in compliance with the Sycamore Township zoning resolution, um, isn't that sufficient for you, Mr. Barrett?
Well, there's, I think it's the car headlights, um, things like that. And then you still have, even though you have a half-foot candle falling on the ground, um, at the, at the boundary, um, you still have impacts from the lights in the units, uh, somewhere on the back deck or the, in the, uh, apartment building that, uh, that lights, what, uh, twenty feet above ground or whatever. So an eight-foot fence really doesn't block it. And even though there's no spill, it still has an impact on the adjoining, uh, properties. So, um, just, I'm not, I'm just concerned about what, what it does to the, to neighbors. And then somewhat thing on the noise, I guess, uh, cars coming in and out, uh, that driveway, especially on the west boundary, that goes right up along the backyard of, uh, a number of units or homes, eastern homes there. So, uh, that's why I'm inclined to ask that we see something that resolves some of these issues before it gets to the trustees. Or, uh, um, I guess the flip side of it is if we would let it go, um, either without those comments, hoping that the applicant does make a change, or we further define what our goals are, I guess, and with a number of other amendments and then, uh, pass it that way.
Well, uh, you're certainly free to make a motion, uh, of additional changes. Um, and if it gets a second, we'll vote on that. So, uh.
If I may, real quickly, you know, right now, as it stands, zoning commission has, uh, the ability to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or, or, you know, or, or table until, until an opportunity uh, is presented for, for the commission to review these documents, or these, these amendments to the plan.
Well, yeah, I, I haven't heard anything from the applicant though, that they're inclined to do that. If they are, we'll consider a motion to table it to the next meeting to perhaps address those additional issues. But that's, that's up to the applicant.
I would, I would defer to Kirk on the density question for sure. The owner on that one. And, uh, how low they're willing to go in terms of density. Um, in our, in our pre-application meetings, and you know, it was our understanding that density wasn't necessarily the issue, but it was the, the impervious surface ratio that was the issue. So that, you know, we presented this plan with this density and seemed like it was an okay density, um, as long as the ISR was low. Um, but I'd certainly be willing to have those conversations with the owner about, um, what density they are willing to go down to. To, to see if that would be a, a condition they're willing to, to proceed with.
Well, uh, again, it comes back to the applicant though, you know. If, if you want to table this to the next meeting to, to have further discussions with your client about that, we'll certainly consider that. If not though, we're going to plead with some motion here fo- from the, the zoning commission tonight. So.
Kirk, do you have any comments on the, on the tabling? I'm not sure. He, I know he was dealing with dropping kids off to, uh, metricallicular activities, uh, this evening. So he may be busy.
It looks like he might have hung up.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
There you go. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, it was, uh, like Alex says, driving somehow it got, I don't know what happened with the zoom. But, um, no, I think, yeah, tabling it until the next meeting is, we, we can, we can do that and, and have the discussions about the density.
Uh, that's fine. If, if you're requesting that, uh, um, I'll put it before the, uh, um, commission. Is there any objection to tabling this matter until the next meeting?
No.
No.
I, I have no objection.
No objection here.
Uh, so with, with that said, we will table it till the next meeting to address any additional questions with regard to, I think not o- not only, uh, the density, but also perhaps addressing issues about the light spillage or, uh, perhaps fencing along the eastern border. That seems to be where the most concern is. So.
That's the north border, isn't it, Roger? Off of, off of Voorhees? That, that's the north side. And then the west side is over there, the entrances. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have similar issues on the west side too, because that main drive that goes back to, uh, buildings B and C um, approaches the, uh, boundary line pretty close.
Yeah, yeah. Both north and west.
Okay. So, well, the applicants have heard our comments, so, um, we will bring it up again at the next meeting.
All right.
Okay. Uh, gentleman from the applicants, thank you, and everyone else who participated. Um, the trustees have anything they want to tell us?
Uh, so actually at this time, uh, the Montgomery Road, uh, properties owned by the township, um, they are, uh, they're being considered for potential development. Uh, there's, there's not a master plan yet for the site. Uh, so the, the trustees have authorized, uh, a, a, a master planning process of sorts. Um, what we're trying to do is, is kind of lay the groundwork for, for a lot of community input on this. Uh, so it's actually this week, um, it's, it's this Thursday. Uh, there will be a focus group of residents from the surrounding area that will be able to weigh in and comment um, uh, on, you know, potential concerns they have for developing the site. Uh, two weeks after that, on March twenty-fifth, uh, we're going to have a business community, uh, focus group. Uh, where we've selected members from, uh, uh, Kenwood and the surrounding area uh, to represent the business community and additionally weigh in on how the township should, should develop the, uh, uh, seven acres of, actually seven and a half acres of township-owned land. Um, both of those meetings are going to be followed up with, uh, one last focus group, uh, where we're inviting potential developers, uh, to come in, hear the comments from our uh, residents and business community and, uh, additionally weigh in, um, weigh in on the development. Uh, that'll culminate in a, a charrette, uh, planning process. Uh, think of that as like, um, uh, like a whiteboard pla- uh, brainstorming session, if you will, uh, to, to try and develop a, uh, uh, what was potentially going to be, um, what ratio of uses, um, would, would, would best fit that site. So there will be, uh, there will be a master plan kind of executive summary that, that, that comes from that. Uh, and that'll be, um, uh, that'll be. that'll be available to the public for, for review. And potentially, it's going to be the if, if not the binding document, it'll be the guiding document for any, any potential RFQs that the, the township publishes for, you know, when they choose to sell a property. So.
Skylar, have, have the trustees chosen any consultant yet with regard to this process?
Yes, the process is actually being facilitated by Jay Stewart, Stewart Land Use, formerly of Kleinger's. So he will be, he'll be leading the focus group. There'll be some township staff there just to, just to help facilitate. But really, we're trying to, to not steer this group at all and get the, you know, kind of get that, that, that true focus group environment where we're you know, we're, we're hearing their comments as naturally as possible. So that will be, it, it will be a, I guess, from a, from a, from a live standpoint, because of COVID, it'll be a closed session of sorts. But the, the whole event will be livestreamed, actually, all three. So there will be links on the, the township website, and, you know, we'll, we'll get those up here soon, if they're not already.
Okay.
Skylar, has the, is the eighty-seven sixty Montgomery Road Hillpoint property development going to be before the trustees next week on Tuesday?
You cut out there for a minute, but are we talking about the Hillpoint portal?
Yes, it's, it's still scheduled for Tuesday next week.
Yeah, it's scheduled for next week on the, on the sixteenth for, for review and consideration. That is, that's only case, what was that, twenty twenty dash oh seven Z, so it's the zone change only. I can tell you that there have been some additional conversations between the residents and the developer. I think they're currently proposing a, a lower density for that, for that site. But that's, that's ultimately not a a, a consideration that the trustees will, will be able to use. This is, this is a straight zone change from from its current single-family district to, to de-multi-family. So the, you know, it's, it's a, it's a yes or no vote based on you know, conformance with the, with future land use plan.
Okay, and if that ends up getting approved, it'll go back before us again with the, potentially they'll bring it back with a lower density and ask this commission.
It'll, it'll potentially come back to, to the zoning commission. If they drive the density low enough, like we were talking about tonight with, with thresholds, if they, if they get it into the, the low-density multi-family, then they could develop it by right. So it, it won't, if it doesn't meet the PUD one threshold anymore, then they've they, they've got an easier administrative process to go through. So. The other thing that we're working on right now, we are very close to taking a final, final draft of the, of the new land use plan back to our steering committee for review. We've done our, we've done our internal staff vetting of the, of the document. There's a couple tweaks that have, that have come out of that, that I'm trying to finish up this week. As soon as I get those done, I'm gonna push that out this month to to the steering committee. Once, once they vet it, it'll be a case in front of zoning, zoning commission for consideration. So that should be, that should be on our radar here in the next let's say, month or two, just depending on what, what comes out of the steering committee. But that's certainly coming up this spring for us. We are also working on those tax amendments.
Okay.
We're, we're doing the red line right now. We should be able to submit a document for review by, by zoning commission, you know, by next month. Depending on when we get that submitted, it may end up on your April or or May meeting schedule, but it is coming. So those are, those are active projects right now. So we, we've got a full plate right now with, with policy documents, so. So, the only, the only other thing I'll tell you about, it's not really planning and zoning related, but our maintenance department is, has started moving into the new maintenance and storage facility out back of, of the township administrative building here. The, the salt dome's been open for, for this season. They got a temporary CO for that. I believe we still have a temporary CO for the storage building. It's not, it's not finished, but the, the things that our, our contractor has to work on, he, he gets to work around us now. So they, they started moving, you know, some of the long-term storage supplies and seasonal equipment into the building already. So I think there's been some discussion about, you know, possibly doing kind of a low-key open house, kind of a walkthrough. Not, not sure where that planning is at just yet. But it's certainly, information will put out to the public and send invites out to, to zoning commission if you guys are interested.
All righty.
That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Okay, I think our next meeting would be Monday, April the twelfth, correct?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Skylar, do you know if we have any public hearings other than the continuation of tonight's hearing?
Uh, right now, I believe it's just the continuation. Like I said, I'm, I'm hoping to get a resolution on the Jewish hospital proposal. That is probably too early for the, for the tax amendment, but we'll, we'll see if we can get that out.
Okay. Thanks. If, if there's nothing else, we'll consider a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye.
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 We are adjourned. Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.